Warm winter evening. If this is worn elsewhere, chief whip. Okay, tonight, let's start by praising the minutes of the end where the 29th, 2019 regular meeting, please. Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson. An all yes vote?
Yes.
Okay. Public comments. I believe we have someone signed in there, Mr. Ellis?
Yes, sir. Megan Hatfield.
Yeah, I have the pink paper, please. I know we're...
I've never read this before.
Thank you, sir. All right. Megan Hatfield, to the rest of Hamlin, I think, also here at Lincoln County High School.
Yes.
Just want to talk to us about WEA, AFT, and WBSSPA. I guess these public comments represent all those who say they give the group.
Yes.
Okay. Just a reminder, Megan, when you sign in, the board will take the verse with you, as we would if you were actually on our agenda, whether we even certainly listen to it.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Who's yours?
Okay, I'm Megan Hatfield. I'm a math teacher at Lincoln County High School. I'm also the county WEA treasurer, and I have a statement I'd like to read. I'm speaking on behalf of LCEA, AFT, and WBSSPA to ask you to consider signing the resolution to oppose Senate Bill 451. This bill will have a negative impact on our school systems and students' education. This bill supports originating the opinions for, or, I'm sorry, the options for charter schools, flexible pay, decreasing funding for each child in the county, and increasing the risk of teachers leaving this county. The students in Lincoln County deserve better than what this bill will provide them. Passage of this bill will harm this county and state for years to come. This is why we must stop that bill from going any further. I am speaking for educators, service personnel, students, and parents of Lincoln County urging you to vote to sign this resolution, supporting our decision to take action, if needed, against this harmful bill. Lincoln County stands united in support of our public school system, and we must defend and protect our students' rights for free and public education by well-trained, certified, caring teachers. And I think that you had a copy of the resolution that was on the agenda. Okay.
Thanks, Megan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My comment any further than that, but that is, as was alluded to, on our administrative section of our agenda tonight, and the board members may have any comments that they wish to say, or Mr. Baker, if anyone else wants to speak at that time in May. So we'll just talk a little bit here and then tomorrow.
Or, if anyone in the audience wished to speak to us and have us converse with them, since it's on our agenda to address it, we can address it at that point in time. Correct?
I'll probably permit that, yes.
Okay.
Okay. First, before anything else, we want to hear from Ray Ellis, Director of Finance, and give us a finance update. Mr. Ellis? Take off that courier outfit, and how you're a finance director.
That's the first time I've ever had to deliver.
You did pretty good.
Next time I'll be a little bit, a little bit quicker.
You did well.
I'll be brief, as I always try to be. In front of you, we got, first four pages are, excuse me, our balance sheet for the month of December. I tried to run it for the month of January, since I have a closed January, it just looked really odd, so I just went with December. That's all the information in the back related to cash and expenses through the end of December. Once you get through the balance sheet, those first four pages, if you go to the fifth page, it's tax revenue for five years. I've always tried to give you an update on that. And the tax revenue that we have coming in from the county is the lowest that I can find on the spreadsheets that I've kept and that Bernie had before I, I think you gotta go back to 1314, or 13, let's see, 1314, 1213, somewhere along those lines to get to where we're at right now. We're that low, going back the last four or five years, it's been a lot higher.
Now, this was, it's been written in just through January.
That's through the end of January, that's through last week.
But it doesn't really compare to the upper part, which is just...
Well, what it is, that's just the, if you take the amount that I wrote in and you subtract what's above it, that total, you'll get what came in in January.
Right. I was wondering, really, you can't compare it to the other prior years?
Well, you can, because I put through January on each of those as well.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So this year it's at 4.174 million, last year it's at 4.4. When you get back to 1314, it was at 4.177, so it's within $3,000 of where we're at this year. So every month, whenever I get those checks, they're just not where they were at last year. Now, with that being said, I'll get a check this month. I don't expect it to be a great amount, but when March, April, and then May comes in, we'll, we'll get the majority of our tax revenues, and there'll be large checks. I hope that we can make that up, you know, where we're at, we're 3,000, 300,000 behind where we were last year, so. I hope, I, I wish that would happen. I'm not very hopeful that it's gonna happen. So, with that being said, the cash is okay right now. I think we're ahead of where we were at last year and the year before. But with that said, February is always a killer month of cash. That's when we've been depleted the last, well, since I've been here, so this is my third February. The other two Februaries, cash just dropped, and I think we went below 2 million, which makes me really nervous. We may get there, I'm not real sure, how many, how much of expenditure we're gonna be paying out this month, but I don't look to have a whole lot of cash into February. So right now, we're, I think, about 4.2 million, but that, that'll drop to below 2, so I'm sure by the end of the month. So, even though it looks really good, it's, it's just gonna happen in the spring. So until late winter, spring, it just drains us. I've been working with the secretaries on the profit and loss statements, using the event codes and school funds online. We had that training, January 8th. We've been emailing back and forth on certain, you know, different problems here and there. I ran those reports, I have access to all that, so I ran a report for every school, and it looks like everybody's doing what they're supposed to do. Now, I'm gonna have to go back and check to see if we're missing stuff. There's very few things that are not gonna have an event code tied to them. One of the problems that I saw was that a couple of the schools, they went and they used, let's say, the football account. I think that was what was used in both occurrences, was the football account, they went out and they spent a lot of money on equipment. Well, when you look at the profit and loss, it looks like that was just a loss of, you know, whatever that expense was. One school was like $7,000, because there wasn't an event code tied to any revenue source. So I think that's just the flaw that the state has, you know, they say you have to have an event code on that expenditure, but there's no revenue tied to it, so when you look at those, it's not gonna look right all the time. You know, they're buying that with money that they've raised, or with gate receipts, you know, throughout the course of the year, and there's event codes to all the other fundraisers, you know, where they were selling t-shirts, or popcorn, or whatever it may be, and there's a revenue and expense. Well, the profit stays in that account, they use that to buy the equipment, but you don't have the event code for any kind of revenue getting attached, the event code for that to all those other fundraisers, so it looks kinda odd. But I talked to the auditors, that's where they wanted it, they're down there auditing us now, so it's really nice. Whenever I run into a problem or I got a question, I just go and ask them what they want done. So that's coming along, I think everybody's nearly there where we need to be. Some of the, you know, some grade schools, like Ranger and West Hamlin, they just don't have the events or the fundraisers, so, you know, their stuff's kinda basic. When you get to the middle schools and the high schools, or something like, you know, Hamlin and Duval and Harps, where they have all those grades and all those fundraisers and sports on top of it, you know, their list of event codes and profit and loss statements is quite large. So, but everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing. W2s are out, they went out, I think, on the 16th, I had them ready, I think, on the 14th. I didn't send them the paychecks, I just did it the next day. The 1099 miscellaneouses, they went out, probably early last week. The 1099Rs went out, that's the 1099 for retirees, and they went out, all was good, until people started showing up, and they said, hey, there's a problem, H&R blocking except for a 1099R. I did these the same way as I did last year's, there's a certain code that popped up in Weavis, and I changed it to be just like last year's, but I noticed a problem, I was talking with Kim Harvey, who's the Weavis guru for the state, we were emailing back and forth till about 10 o'clock one night, working on this, and on my end, I thought it was good, she said she wasn't real sure, but she couldn't check it. We ran them, and what happened was, you're only supposed to have two numbers on there, I think it's just the amount paid, gross distribution, the amount paid, but it put two other numbers on there, and it put capital gains and federal tax withheld. So it looked like you didn't, you know, whoever was receiving that money didn't really receive it, we withheld all of it. So yesterday afternoon, and all day today, with the exception of maybe two hours, that's what we worked on, I had Robin train, and we had to manually go in and change everybody's amounts, and then rerun them, check them, and as Mr. Wilkinson, Mr. Priestley can see, we even put a little note in there, and we're gonna mail those out in the morning. We probably, we were gonna be pushing it to get it done today, we might have been able to get a few of them yet, but we're just gonna wait. You have yours right there, in that folder. So that was a hiccup, and they're working with the programmers to see what might have been the cause of that. Weavis can be hard to understand.
So I'm gonna have to amend my tax return, now, I would tell that, you know, that sort of taxable income, so I just...
I talked to Amy Willard, who handled Department of Finance, and I've talked to our auditor, and they said the 1099Rs are not worth the paper that they're printed on, because you don't send them to the IRS.
Unless they're taxed with help.
Well, we, we don't, though.
Right, I understand, that's what I'm saying.
Of course, it looks like we withheld everything, so if somebody wanted to make this money, get that money back.
I did, I never really, I always assumed that there's no tax withheld, and there isn't, so I have, I have to look at the other ones we got, but these are correct here.
But I, whenever I sent those out, I'd get, catch that mistake, but obviously, you know, we've learned the lesson, I wanted to look for it next year, because that's cost us about 10 hours of extra work.
Go ahead, Ray.
Well, with that said, if you got any questions, I'm done.
Does anybody have anything in particular, Mr. Ellis? Now, we're in the new year, so I'm assuming that we're gearing up, we're having our work session on the 20th for this month.
That is what I understand.
Okay. And we're gearing up to have a budget for next year, all I know, all those pieces fit together there, so.
They should do. Yeah, I've already started planning on a few things for the budget. I haven't worked the numbers up for the work session yet, but I'll meet with Jeff and Bill, I'm sure, in the next week or so. And put those numbers together.
Right. Does anyone have anything else? Oh, okay, thank you, Ray. I thought Bill was gonna come up and have something to do with this. Okay, now we're gonna go down to, we have more presentations to the board this evening, so we'll go down to the administrative section. May I have the motion, please, to look at those?
I'll move.
Did Mr. Curry make the motion? Ms. Smith, did you second that? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Fred and Carol. All right. Mr. Baker?
Item A is an agreement with Joseph Short to provide transportation services for a West Hamlin history student, beginning November 1, 2018, 2018-19, school year, and just to know the question of why it's retroactive to November 1st. Sadly, Mr. Short's spouse passed away, and the contract was in her name, so we've had to create a new contract that we can pay. Item B is an out-of-state travel for Kim McMillan to Savannah, Georgia, to attend the Interdisciplinary Stent Teaching and Learning Conference on March 20th through 24th, 2019. Item C is an out-of-state trip, Lincoln County High School senior class, to San Daski, Ohio, for a senior class trip to Cedar Point, May 20th, 2019, transported by charter bus, expenses paid by group. Item D is out-of-state trip for Harps pre-K 8th grade students to Williamsburg, Virginia, to tour Colonial Williamsburg and Jamestown, May 30th through June 1st, 2019, transported by charter bus, expenses paid by group. Item E is according to the provisions of County Policy 8210, School Calendar, and West Virginia Code 18-5-45, the following revisions to the 2018-2019 school calendar are approved as a result of school cancellation due to extreme weather conditions. So last week, we were closed on the 30th and 31st, and we are, I'm recommending to the board tonight that we use the first two OS days that are available to us, which is February the 15th and March the 4th, to make up those two lost days of instruction. That's, would still leave us with five days after March the 1st or the 4th, that's in the calendar we can use to make up the lost instruction if necessary.
Okay. Anybody have any questions regarding that item? I'm pretty much consistent with what we've done in the past. Okay. Board's up, anybody have any comments, concerns about any of the other administrative items? Anybody have anything to say? Anything to say, Mr. Baker? I do. Regarding the Senate bill, that's, we have the resolution to force tonight.
I've read that one, yeah.
Or you wanna read that?
I'm gonna read. It's the amended agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I've got it there, I just, go ahead.
I practice reading today, you know. Say it omnibus.
Omnibus.
Almost like sesquicentennial.
Sesquicentennial.
Item F, I'm sorry, I was looking at the old agenda.
Okay. Item F, adoption of resolution regarding Senate Bill 451, the omnibus bill. Lincoln County Board of Education Resolution, Senate Bill 451, the omnibus bill. The board shall consider the following resolution regarding Senate Bill 451 for the omnibus bill. I'm already getting tongue-tied. I'm sorry. Whereas, West Virginia's public education system continues to be underfunded, leading to shortages in teachers, service personnel, nurses, librarians, psychologists, counselors, and special education staff. And whereas, county boards of education budgets are already strained due to previous cuts made to appropriations to the school aid formula. And whereas, a bill originated by the Senate Education Committee, which proposes certain reforms to public education in West Virginia, the omnibus bill. And whereas, the legislature has a duty to provide a thorough and efficient system of free schools in the state, and the Lincoln County Board of Education has been delegated such duty for Lincoln County, West Virginia. And whereas, to the extent reform to West Virginia's public education system is needed, such reform should have the goal of increasing student achievement for the most disadvantaged children who do not have the resources, parental guidance, and general support to succeed in our current system. And whereas, the opioid problem has put an additional strain on our educational system that has furthered the difficulty in educating our most disadvantaged children due to the increase in number and magnitude of behavioral issues in children. And whereas, public schools are at the heart of the community and its well-being, and whereas, reduction in state financial support will negatively impact our ability to serve the children and families of our community. And whereas, research and experience across the country have shown that implementation of certain aspects of the bill has a high likelihood of adversely affecting the education of most disadvantaged children, of the most disadvantaged children in our system. And whereas, certain provisions of the proposed omnibus bill would be detrimental to our public schools and the ability of the Lincoln County Board of Education to provide a thorough and efficient system for all students of Lincoln County. And therefore, be it resolved that the Lincoln County Board of Education opposes any and all efforts to use public funds for education reform, or make any changes that does not lead to higher student achievement for the most disadvantaged students. And be it further resolved that taxation and policy decisions which result in reduced revenues for public education and/or have a negative impact on our students and families must be avoided.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Okay, now, everyone has heard the resolution, are there any comments from any members of the board at this time?
No, I think it's a no-brainer, so. I mean, they're trying to run the public debt check, and what they're doing.
Mr. Curry's not in favor, but he's in favor of the resolution. Anybody else have anything? Carol, you have any comments or anything?
I agree with, with Mr. Curry.
Okay. Ray, do you have anything?
I, I agree that I'm opposed to the omnibus bill, but I'm not sure that I agree with what every state of purpose has said a resolution, whereas, the sign. I, I don't think that, I mean, we all understand the challenges we face in terms of our student base, and the problems we face from both a financial, from a home perspective, from a drug perspective, from a parental situation perspective, but we can't lose sight either of the higher achieving students, of the, and of the students who achieve at a normal level, and as I read this resolution, it's basically saying that we oppose anything that isn't geared toward only helping the most disadvantaged of students, and that's not our obligation. Our obligation is to help every student in this county get the best education that we can provide to every student. So, not, not opposed to the resolution as a whole, but my goal is not going to be geared toward helping one subset of students to the disadvantage of others.
Mr. Baker and I discussed this when we reviewed the, the resolution, and we had the same discussion, and I think from what Mr. Baker was stating, that due to the goals that have been emphasized, like in our state goals, whatever, that that was the primary focus of this, although we also concur with what you're saying, that other students are certainly involved, and our funding is from a giant pool, and if you have to use it, you're gonna use it in all different areas, so we, we agree with what you're saying, as well they can hurt.
Well, and the likelihood as well is that SB 451 targets the effects that it would have more disproportionate impact on the most disadvantaged students, and that's probably why it's written this way, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not gonna lose sight of the fact that we have the same obligation to every child.
And, and once Mr. Baker and I discussed this, we thought about the possibility, I mean, maybe having some additional statements added to it, but we just thought at this time, we would just clarify what our position was, such as your statement, and go with the resolution as it is. Anybody else have any other comments about it? I've got a couple, I'm not gonna use that "O" word. Regarding Senate Bill 451, I just have a couple things. I oppose this personally, this legislation, because I think it can imperil student achievement in general, for all students. I think it will siphon resources, or would siphon resources, from our county system throughout West Virginia. And I also oppose the provisions in it that have no educational value, such as the one requiring employee organization members to re-up every year, rather, you know, doing that without it being done automatically. If I don't want to be in it anymore, then, hey, I'll let the non-finance don't conduct it for me longer, but that has no educational value in my mind. So there are things like that that, that just doesn't seem profitable to me. I've heard on the news that there were over 60 measures in this bill, and, you know, I just feel like that all portions of a, of legislation just stand on its own merit, put them all out there, then argue, you know, pros and cons of each one, and not try to lump them all together so that some things, you know, ride the coattails or something else, or the whole thing is not, uh, passed because of, you know, the same reasoning in the opposite direction. I am for, though, some of the provisions of 451, and I'm not gonna go, like I said, so many of them, but obviously, salary increases are one that we highly support. We've done it in the past, and we think the 5% is another step, but it's nowhere near where we need to be for all of our employees. P.I. funding, once again, we know that that's a, an area that we need to continue funding each year, it probably want to continue to be an issue, and, once again, we've expected and or anticipated by this time that a long-term solution would have been, would have been developed, that has not happened, but it's a short-term issue, or we think that, you know, providing, some funding that's being proposed in this legislation would be appropriate and help. Then there's also provisions that are providing additional personnel in a lot of areas that we presently need, counselors, if it comes to mind, and there are areas like that, social workers, that we, you know, we're gonna talk about our school budget for next year soon, and one of the things that we're facing with already is we're almost, I think, 39 service personnel over the school aid formula. Well, and then we're 17 professionals, I believe, right, Mr. Baker? So those are all fund, positions that are not funded by the state, that means we have to pick up that. If, are we able to do that? So that's what we're gonna have to fight with him the next few months, to develop a budget that can stay within our means. So, but adding additional positions will help us, and if that portion ever were to happen, because we can provide some of these positions that we presently aren't able to do. Unfortunately, the way things are now, if the status quo remains, we're probably gonna have to eliminate some positions that we currently have, that we don't, you know, that are almost essential, but, you know, you have to live within your budget. So for those reasons, I endorse the resolution with the caveat that Mr. Baker said. Anybody have anything else? Anyone in the audience have any comments? Okay, thank you. All right, all that being said, we're gonna vote on all the administrative items, including the, the resolution, the amended agenda item regarding the resolution. Is that an all yes vote on that?
Yes.
Yeah, Ms. Smith, that all yes? Okay, all board members voting yes, and I understand we have a, somebody wants to sign.
We're gonna do it now.
Let's just do it for the time, we'll just do it now. I was doing that, and I understand that, it's now going to the House, depending on which media outlet it was listed to, whether it's going to, how we will do there, but many are stating that they expect it will be revised in some fashion, so we can only hope that, that start is past the Senate bill, and, you know, some of the positive aspects of it will come out and remain in there, and some of the, we feel are negative, won't remain, so time will tell. I'm sure they'll have a good time with that for the next few weeks. Better than that, so. Okay. All right, so all the members of the board, except for Mrs. Smith, has not signed this?
We can make it.
You can ask Carol if she would like one of us to sign it with the hand.
Carol, would you like, would you like one of the board members to sign on your behalf, or I can sign on your behalf?
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay. Before you, like, we want to make copies.
Okay.
Do I see Izzy in attendance? She's here. Izzy's in the house. All right. We're gonna make some copies that can be given back to the group of you all. Okay, thank you. Okay. Let's move on then to our finance section of the agenda. I have a motion against those items, please. Mr. Wilkinson made the motion, Mr. Baker seconded that motion. Mr. Ellis?
The schedule of invoices totaling $883,071.14, that listing is attached, if you have any questions, just send them in.
It's a big number, Ray.
Like I said, February drains the banking.
Yeah. All right. If anyone's had the opportunity to look at those, and I think maybe you had a couple of questions posed, have been answered by the time. Yeah, all right, if anyone's had the opportunity to look at those, and I think maybe you had a couple of questions posed that have been answered by the time it's part of the vote. Is that an all yes vote on the finance section?
Yes.
Let's go to the personnel section, can I have a motion, please? Mr. Curry? Mr. Baker? Mr. Leable?
Okay, item A, employment of substitute service personnel. Item B, transfer of service personnel. Under item B, number one, the time in Hamlin is two to ten instead of six to two. That was, was posted two to ten, that's what we needed, but, hold on here, so that'd be two to ten. Item C, employment of extracurricular personnel. Item D, leave of absence. And item E, retirements and resignations. And just a reminder that, thanks already mentioned, February twentieth is our work session, and I gave you a list of what vacancies we have, and what vacancies we have for next year, where people transferred and couldn't move this year. So, hopefully, get all those filled.
Thanks. All right, um, those are the personnel actions, anybody have any questions about any of those? If not, is that an all yes vote on the personnel?
Yes.
Yes.
All yes. All right, let's put down comments and concern, board members, you have anything to concern tonight? Mr. Bickham, do you have anything of concern or comment?
Only a reminder that the next meeting on the nineteenth will also be our first public hearing on the two thousand nineteen, twenty school calendar. I'd asked Mrs. Ernt, Ernt to put the calendar on our county website, I didn't check to see if it was on the day.
It's on there this afternoon, sir.
It is on there this afternoon, thank you, Ms. King. So, I look forward to discussing the calendar at our next meeting. Mr. Priestley mentioned our attendance, I have some bad news there, I, the last board meeting, we indicated to you that we'd lost thirty-nine students. Mr. Pritchard ran new numbers for us Friday, and we're down fifty students, since October first.
So, that's gone on since the last that you gave.
It's worrisome that we continue to see a decline in enrollment, and many of those students are, are going homeschooling, that's where we're sitting. We'll, we'll discuss that more when we have our work session on February twenty, I love that's a good one.
A lot, just time to you. Okay. Just, uh, just informational item, the School Board Association will have its spring conference, and we'll be in attendance at that next Friday and Saturday in Charleston. And I'm sure we're here with many of the same topics that we're hearing today, whether it'll be as unified or not, but we'll be here. Okay, if, all that being said, for a second, we're gonna come home, do the work tonight, let's adjourn until February the nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, six p.m., here in Hamlin. Mr. Baker? Mr. Curry? Done all yes vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Have a good evening, Carol.